It is 5:00 PM, Wednesday, November the 5th. We will begin with a roll call. Mr. Skip Corman? Roll call? I'm doing it for Rick. That's okay. Okay, present?
Present.
Present.
Present. For present, Mr. Endicott is absent. You have a quorum. We are now on to an approval of the agenda. I will give everybody one heads up. I made a call and Rick has not heard back from the presenter for the presentation number one, East Kern County Community Foundation. We can leave it there in case the presenter shows up, but right now we are not sure. We're unsure. Fair.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Start at this end, Mr. Blades.
Aye.
Mr. Raj Ratnam.
Aye.
Mr. Hayman.
Aye.
Mr. Gorman.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
We will now move on to the closed session. Conference legal counsel anticipated litigation, government code section 54956.9. Just one case that we'll be hearing, conference legal counsel. I just read that. Mojave Pistachios LLC v. Indian Wells Valley Water District at all Orange County Superior Court Case Number 30-2021-01187275-CU-OR-CJC. We will now retire into closed session and come back out at 6:00 PM. Buck, let's get started. We are out of closed session and back into open session. We are going to begin with the pledge of allegiance. So could I please have everybody rise and face the flag? Over to you, Troop 55, Troop 360. Seven and six zero.
Please move all hats and hoods, place your right hand over the heart. Three, two, one, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if everyone could remain standing, and Mr. Raj Ratnam would you mind?
Please join me in prayer if you would. Lord, thank you for giving us this opportunity to meet here at the city council. Lord, I pray for our country. Lord, I pray for our troops who are in harm's way, protect them from all evil. Lord, I pray for our police department, Lord, as they put their lives on line to protect this community and to be helpful and make this community a better community. Lord, be with them and bless their families. Lord, thank you for giving the opportunity to be on the city council. Lord, give us your wisdom as we discuss matters which are very important to this community. Lord, bless each one of us who are here today. In Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, and thank you to Troop 760 and Troop 55. We appreciate you guys being here. Makes all the difference. And that was a very sharp, crisp delivery. Can I please get the attorney report out of closed session?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. Two items were taken up by the council in closed session. One was anticipated litigation. The other dealt with the existing litigation Mojave Pistachios case. No reportable actions were taken by the council in closed session.
Thank you, Martin. We are on to presentations. We only have one presentation tonight, the East Kern County Community Foundation. So if you have a moment, Megan, please, you can come here, or if you would like, we could set a microphone up here, whichever you feel more comfortable. Okay. That works.
Okay. Hi, thank you for having me. I'm Megan from the East Kern County Community Foundation. We're in Boron. We have an initiative that we would like to invite you guys to take part in. We have organized Prioritize and Unite for East Kern County. We are a nonprofit, doing capacity building for other nonprofits that are doing all the work but not getting the funding that they require to actually do good work. They're the one single person, you know, organizations that are just out there kind of wearing all the hats and doing, you know, scrubbing the floors, also writing the grants. And I hear you guys have a really, really good grant writing team.
We do have a good team.
Yes, so I would like to invite you guys to come and discuss that with us, to come teach. We have a class, free classes on Wednesday, and we want to just extend the hand, I guess. I would like to make sure, we have 20 trained grant writers that we're going to place throughout other organizations to get kind of all on the same page, so we can all go after bigger funding opportunities together as partners and as like sub-grantees. So we're looking to just kind of build capacity throughout East Kern and move forward and kind of go after the bigger things that are more important to the smaller communities like ours.
You bet. You bet. Thank you. Do you want to entertain questions from the council?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah? Does council have anything? No? Okay. Thank you so much for being here. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
I do have one question, sorry. Back to the microphone.
That's good.
No, no, no worries.
Where are the meetings?
I'm sorry?
Where are the meetings?
They're on Zoom. They're free online. They're recorded. I put them on YouTube as well. And they're, it's, we can take broken budgets and fix them for you. We do actual workshops every Monday night at 6:00 PM.
Okay, and you'll provide us the dates and times for all that and send out some invites?
Yep, in the same Zoom link every week, so if you lose it or whatever, you can just re-sign up and it comes right back to you.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
If you could share it with me, I'll make sure they get it.
Okay, yeah, I'll send it to you right now.
Thanks, Megan. Thank you.
All right, that ends our presentations. Run a public comments of items that are not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council on matters that are within the council's jurisdiction and do not already appear on the agenda may do so at this time. Council will not respond to any public comments but may provide direction to staff and collect information. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not act on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Speakers are limited to five minutes. The public comment section of the agenda is limited to a total of one hour. Each speaker is asked to provide his or her name. So if anybody has anything, please accept the microphone. Yeah, good. Okay, seeing nothing. Oh, yes, great. Perfect. All right. Troop 55.
So do I just say my name?
Yep, you could just say your name if you wish.
So I am Nicholas Homemaker, and I was wondering, are we going to be doing flag football for the city sports next year?
That's a good question. City manager?
Young man, we actually just talked about this today. The city is going to partake with flag football, provided we get enough teams to support and sustain the league. They are currently in the process of building it. Though I'm sure they're going to be reaching out for volunteers and coaches and all sorts of things here shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Troop 760, do you have anything?
What's happening with the water rights issue?
That's a good question. That's a very good question. There is a lot, I mean, I had to look at the lawyer because I gotta see what I can say and what I can't say. So the water rights issue is a big issue. What I will say is this, it is an enormous issue and involves multiple parties across and stakeholders all across the whole valley. And I could sit here and talk for about three and a half to four hours trying to pour out to the community as much as at least I have sitting in my head. But I think it's best, when it comes to those issues, that we talk to groundwater authority, and we have a representative from our groundwater authority right here, Mr. Hayman. And there are a lot of ongoing cases right now. And so what you will probably notice is a lot we cannot say, and it's painful. And we cannot say those things because when things are in court, very appropriately, lawyers are saying, hey, everything you say up on that dais is recorded and people are watching it, and it will be used against you. So if, make sure you're watching what you're saying. So what I can say, what I can tell you is it is ongoing and that the community, all the stakeholders are actively involved, and we, it's extremely important. So, Martin, is I, okay, all right. See, I gotta constantly look at the lawyer, so make sure I'm not messing up. All right. Do you have anything to add, Mr. Hayman? Okay, all right. Melanie or Jeff, you guys got anything else? Okay. I don't see anybody on the phone either, so I think we can, we can move on from. Oh, yes, great.
Hello, my name's Justin Dunn. I am a resident of the city. Also a third generation, proud third generation funeral director here at the mortuary. This is off the whim, so please excuse me. I kind of came in here to see how things went. Getting up here was just kind of a last minute decision. But my main, my main concern for addressing the council, and I understand it may not be directly under your control, but a huge, I think, concern to the citizens as well as, especially the elderly citizens in this community, is the lack of health care that our city has. I have to look at it a few ways. One way is, it appears that people come to our hospital locally and they're just shipped out of the area. It's not the hospital that I grew up around, it's not the city that I grew up around. We have great doctors and great health care. I speak to approximately 350 to 400 families a year in my job specifically. Most of those are family members, spouses, family members of decedents that are elderly. I hear a lot of things. I hear, I had to spend the last year of my life with my spouse, taking them back and forth to appointments in Lancaster, Palmdale, Bakersfield. As you can imagine, being of that age and trying to find transportation yourself and getting your spouse to those locations to get the care you need, it shouldn't be happening. Our city is an amazing city. I love this community. I grew up in a community that had health care. We had great doctors, Dr. Stemmer, Dr. Carroll, you know, I'm nervous, but I could list a million of them. We lost those doctors because I believe it had something to do with what's going on at the hospital or health care or whatnot. But what I do know is that we have a lot of people in our community that really love our community. And I think that everything that we talk about here, all these grants, all these funding programs, everything that's going on with the city, the pity pool, none of that matters if you don't have a community that's taken care of by health care. You have to have health care. And I don't know what's going on at Ridgecrest Hospital. To be honest with you, I'm not prepared to talk about that. But what I do know is that we have a hospital that does not keep patients at our hospital, to my knowledge. I could tell you that over 50% of my decedents that come into my care are from out of town communities. They live here and they're shipped out. I live in a community, I grew up in a community that wasn't that way. And so what I ask of you, I know it's not directly in your control, but what I ask of the city, I ask of you, is join me in asking questions. I don't, I think that it's your responsibility as members that run our community to be asking those questions. We have some great people in this community that would do anything for it, and I'm one of them. Let me know what I can do to help. I'm not afraid to ask questions, obviously. I talk to people for a living, but I think the city needs to be asking more. We're losing our people. I meet with people that prepay for their cremations or their funeral services that are getting towards retirement, and I could tell you, it's sickening that more than ever I hear that they're going to be leaving when they retire. Why? Because they don't have any health care. That is the number one reason. And I don't understand why it's not being blown up. Like, why are we not freaking out about this? We don't have health care, we don't have a city. We can't take care of our citizens. People love this community. I love this community, and I want health care. It can happen. We have a Navy base that needs people. We're not meeting the needs of the Navy right now, and I'm sure you guys are aware. You know, at some point, women were having to have their babies in the ER. That's unacceptable, and you guys should be saying that's unacceptable. So please join me in having that care and asking those questions. That's all I ask of you. I don't know if it takes me running for city council myself. I don't know if you guys indirectly can do anything about the hospital. I don't know if that would put me in a position to make a difference, but I ask of you, I respect all of you, I know most of you personally, and I'm asking you, please start asking the questions. If you love the city like I do, please ask those questions.
Thank you, Justin. Okay, seeing no further comments, we can move on to council announcements and direction. Mr. Gorman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciated the passion and the subject. Keep the heat up. The local farmer's market, local mobile farmer's market seems to have found a new slot in the tractor supply parking lot. I think they're settling in there at Saturday, generally Saturday morning. I was there last Saturday. It's getting an attendance, and with a growing attendance of people buying stuff, it'll grow. I encourage everybody to visit our farmer's market Saturday morning. I forget the exact hours. More people come out there and buy stuff, the more it'll grow, and that's what we want. I had another subject, but I'll be 80 years old this month, so I was lucky to remember that one. Thank you.
Fair enough. Thank you, Skip. Yeah, Mr. Hayman, I'm not sure if you, if you have anything? No? Mr. Raj Ratnam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to recognize some of the achievements of the organizations in our community. I mean, we often don't, we don't pay attention to small things that are happening, but as most of you said, we are in a community where we live and we love to be here, and we want to see growth in this community. So, I mean, these issues are always in the newspaper, but not many people have access to the newspaper, so I just wanted to bring to the attention of citizens a couple of things, good things though. So, first is about Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. The hospital won its second consecutive Joy in Medicine Award for its commitment to improving professional satisfaction and reducing staff burnout. Our hospital is the only rural hospital recognized by the American Medical Association for this honor. The recognition is based on the findings from the American Medical Association's annual well-being survey. RRH outperformed the national average on nine out of 10 indicators. Among the highlights were a physician satisfaction of 90%, up from 74% in 2024. Meanwhile, reported burnout dropped from 19% to 10% compared to the national average of 43%. These are all the good things that are happening in our hospital. I mean, we all know that in our work, if we are burnt out, our productivity would be reduced. So, the important factor, one of the important factors RRH is focusing is to reduce the burnout of the staff members they have. And I do acknowledge what Mr. Justin Dunn said about what is happening with the hospital. I mean, so much of discussion is going on on that. Couple of reasons I want to mention why we are not able to have that many facilities. The first one is shortage of staff. It is very difficult to get doctors to Ridgecrest. The second is medical reimbursement. So, they are working through that, and hopefully there would be a solution, and we'll have better facilities in Ridgecrest, at Ridgecrest Regional Hospital. The second one is about our local schools. The schools showed slight gains on the 2024-25 California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress Test, according to the figures released by the California Department of Education. The Sierra Sand Unified School District posted an approximately two-point gain in English language odds with 40.52% meeting or exceeding the standard compared to 38.81% in 23-24. And they gained in the two points in math, and they gained the standards required in case of science. So these are all the good things happening in our community, I mean, which we generally don't acknowledge or probably we don't know what is happening. The third one is Saracosa Community College has been recognized by the Campaign of College Opportunity as a 2025 pathway companion of equity for its exceptional program in preparing Hispanic students to succeed in writing at the baccalaureate level. So, the statewide honor celebrates institutions leading the way in equitable placement and student achievements. So I want to congratulate Jim Sauer of Ridgecrest Regional Hospital for their Joy in Medicine Award. I want to congratulate Dr. April Moore, Sierra Sand School District Superintendent, for the achievements in the standards. And I want to congratulate Dr. Sean Hancock for getting the Pathway Champion Award. And last but not the least, I want to congratulate Emmanuel Christian School for winning the High Low League Football Championship. Go Crusaders! Good job! So, thank you very much, and thanks, Mayor, for giving me this opportunity to put those things to the public.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you for bringing those out. They need to be said, and we miss sometimes. We go through meetings and we skip over, we get so focused with our head down in the weeds, and we need to recognize those things. Thank you, Solomon. I have a few things. The first is, so November, November the 8th, and I just found this out a couple of days ago, and I should have known better, but November the 8th is the 82nd birthday of the base. It also coincides, and Rebecca, you can help me out here, I believe it coincides with a ribbon cutting for the China Lake Museum. And so I think that, thought that was a cool bit of history, and I don't know, Skip, I don't know if you were tracking that, but I wasn't. On November the 15th, from 8:00 to 10:00, coalescing over by Starbucks on 8:40 South China Lake, there's going to be a, with the hospital, with the city partnership to do a community cleanup. I'm not quite sure what area they're going to be focusing on, but I guess that'll be, that'll be apparent. November the 29th, 3:30 to 7:30 PM, on Balsam Street, there's going to be a holiday market. I think it's even, there's even going to be a youth component to that too as well, Jennifer, is that correct? Yes, okay. And that is all I have for upcoming, upcoming events. We can now move on to the consent calendar. All items listed on the consent are considered to be routine and uncontroversial by city staff. Consent items may be approved by one motion if no member of the council or audience wishes to comment or ask questions. If comment or discussion is desired by anyone, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and will be considered in listed sequence with an opportunity for any member of the public to address the city council concerning the item before the action is taken. There are four consent items, and they are listed on the posted agenda. So, troops, this is where if you were reading the, if you had an agenda in front of you and you're looking at the consent calendar, you could raise your hand or say out loud, please pull this item, please pull that item, and then we would say, we would hold that, approve the agenda, and then we would go discuss that item, whatever that item is. Does that make sense? No? I gave it a little bit? No? Well, at least, at least you're honest. Thanks, Noah. Do you want to go and read them off? Okay. Does any member of the council wish to have an item pulled? Any member of the public wish to have an item pulled? Number three. Thank you, Mr. Wicknick. Okay, can I get him, can I get a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
So we're making a motion to approve two, four, and five.
Correct.
Second.
Please vote. Four ayes, one abstention, because he's absent. Motion carries.
So now that we approved the consent agenda, now we're going to go back and talk about that item that the public wanted to bring out.
Good evening, council. Tom Wicknick. This is the final approval of the ordinance to work on enforcing illegal fireworks and making sure that there's consequences for people using illegal fireworks in the city. First of all, I will just go straight out, and I don't think this is necessary at all because there's already a law that affects, that does ban illegal fireworks in the city. And the fire department can enforce that. They can enforce that right now. They don't need anything from the city of Ridgecrest to do that. In doing research on this agenda item, I did find that there was information, like on the West Kern, that the fire department does enforce it. So I was wondering, does the city have any statistic over the last 10 years, have, has the fire department issued any citation for illegal fireworks, and how many? Do we have any information on that at all?
I don't, I don't think we have it right at hand, but I know that the staff was having the conversation. Sorry.
Okay. Yeah, I would like an answer because if they weren't enforcing it, I guess the question would be, is if we're spending over $2 million a year for fire services, maybe they should enforce it if, in fact, we have the illegal fireworks problem. Now, based on that information, and that I don't have information on how many citations have been issued in the city of Ridgecrest, I guess my question would be, is, the only reason that this is before us is because somebody doesn't like the noise. And they, of course, as they say here in the whereas of the ordinance, that there's being increasingly prone to fires. Well, that's the justification for doing it. Right now, the only fire I remember is the fire out at the fairgrounds last year at the public's display. Now, I know there has been a couple of fires over the years, but I haven't seen it as a big issue or a big factor in needing our own ordinance to ban illegal fireworks. Based on that, I still, I want to address a couple of issues that are in the ordinance itself. First of all, I don't think, we know that this applies only to illegal, not safe and sane fireworks. Well, something should be done a lot quicker in this item that says it doesn't apply to safe and sane. Yes, we do get to it as you go down through the wording in here. It finally does come out that it doesn't apply, but at the first look, there's a lot of people that have no idea that illegal fireworks doesn't include safe and sane fireworks. And we've done polling on social media, and we found that out. There's a lot of people that don't know that safe and sane and illegal fireworks are two different things. They look, it looks like the city is trying to make all fireworks illegal, which I know that's not the case. But at the point is, and here, it looks like that. Going through here, you finally do say it on page two, safe and sane fireworks are not included. But then when we go down a little bit further on page two, the part I find interesting is, is that you're going to get fined for that, up to $1,000. But guess what? 65% of that $1,000 go to the state of California. We get 35%? So we do the work for enforcing illegal fireworks, and California gets all, most of the money? Doesn't make sense to me, and you're not, it's not being distributed through the county, which sometimes it could be. Safe and sane, safe and sane should also be included in the definitions. Now, this one I really think is important. Before you pass this thing, there's one thing, you got all the definitions listed in there, but the one that's not in there is a definition of safe and sane fireworks. I believe you should amend this before you pass it and include that definition in that paragraph. To not do that is, again, not giving a good representation of this. When you go to page three in paragraph H, almost all the discussion is all about residential property. What about commercial property? So what if I go buy a whole bunch of fireworks from Las Vegas and go down in the old Kmart parking lot and start blowing out fireworks? So I guess that's not a problem, because that's commercial property. This says residential, over and over and over. And then it says, finally, it is going to apply to the host. The host will have liability of this. And here's where it comes into a problem again. On page four, paragraph G, there's a rebuttable presumption that the record owner of private property has shown on the county's latest equalized property tax assessment rolls, and the LECE of the property have noticed of any violation. I'll wrap up as quick as I can.
Just a, just a few more comments.
Okay. So, if somebody is deployed in the Navy, and they have somebody renting one of their properties, how do they know that one of their renters is not blowing off fireworks? And yet, they're, they're liable. And that could be a 30-day, month-to-month thing. So the registered owner has nothing to do with this. But yet, here, it's a presumption that they know. Says it right there. So because of that, I'm out of time. I'll sum up in that, there are some problems with this ordinance. And I believe at least add safe and sane to your definitions list. But this, as far as enforcing it, how do you know, handle the leases and the renters to make sure that they know that they shouldn't do it? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wicknick. Do we have any other comments on, on item number three? No. Yes, actually, Martin, if you would, I think there was a few things that you could touch on. Now, I know we've talked about this a few times in council, we've touched on all those items, but if you could provide some clarity.
Yeah, I would really invite to have the speaker watch back last meeting, where the chief of police went through all these items in great detail and explained to the council. But briefly, the ordinance amends the code. So once it is put into the code, the definition, the first page is going to advise the reader that this is only applicable to dangerous fireworks, not safe and sane fireworks. That'll be right in the beginning of the ordinance. The definition of safe and sane is also in the first paragraph, safe and sane fireworks as defined in California Health and Safety Code, section 12259. As chief explained to the council last time, this is a tool that'll assist the police department in enforcing use of illegal fireworks. It is like with any other violations, like with any other contact, it is a discretionary tool. Obviously, circumstances will dictate how it's, how it's used. We spoke about commercial properties and whether or not that, you know, will be enforced in the same way as residential. But if you have any other questions regarding, I'm available, Captain is available as well. But I think most of the things that Mr. Wicknick talked about.
I believe so. I think we're okay there. Captain, do you just have any comments that you would like to, to make?
Just the point of the ordinance.
If you don't mind, sir. Thank you.
Tom, I understand exactly where you're coming from with sitting in this afternoon for the chief told I was going to have to be here. I looked over real quick, so I know it's kind of all over the place. But it, it comes down to, a lot of times when us or the fire department have to go out to, to the reports of the illegal fireworks from the bottle rockets, to the roman candles, we know where they're coming from. We see the yard, we see them coming up in the air, and then you get in the backyard and you got 20 people going, you know. We hope to never have to cite someone through this ordinance. We just want the compliance so it keeps the community, you know, safe. From a guy who's worked 27 years here, every Fourth of July period, every night, there's a small brush fire as a result of fireworks. I don't have the numbers. I have seen Kern County citing residents when they could actually see who was doing the illegal fireworks. This just basically just puts it on the, the property owner to ensure that their tenants, whether it's rental, follows the law and makes it so that it doesn't put them at risk for getting this citation. But the overall hope is we never have to cite for it, because it's not happening.
Thank you, Captain. I appreciate that.
Any questions from you guys?
No. We were pretty, I think we were pretty thorough last meeting.
All right. Thank you.
So back to the council. Any other questions or comments?
I'll be glad to comment in that I think after the last Fourth of July, which was this year, I think a threshold was reached with regard to attendant loud illegal fireworks going off all around and in the city. It got my attention. It seemed like it was, there was more activity in that regard this year and, and, and the previous year than there has been in the past. I'm wondering if perhaps that may have been exacerbated by the extent to which the Fourth of July, as far as the fireworks coming off the fairgrounds, wasn't happening on the Fourth of July. It was happening on, on attendant day that was convenient and economically convenient to have it happen near the Fourth of July. But the community chose for weeks before and perhaps weeks after to do their own celebrations with an increasing amount of illegal fireworks. And if indeed, there was, there was some effort to stem the tide, the effort hasn't been effective, partly because of enforcement limitations. This particular municipal law includes, correct me if I'm wrong, it includes an item that helps effect enforcement, and that is the social host ordinance. I don't think that was available to the fire department in trying to stand against illegal fireworks taking place here in the city. Perhaps this will help. At least, it's my hope. And I, I do find, as an individual who carried in the issue, as I get older, those noises get louder. And I'm not the only one annoyed at it. We have animals that are very annoyed at it, animals that get lost. So there, I hope that didn't sound defensive. I didn't mean it to, just an explanation.
Thank you, Skip. Mr. Heyman, do you have anything? Mr. Roger Rotnum? Unless there are any further comments from the public, I would entertain a motion. Oh, I see the light's green, so if you are on the phone, please go ahead, caller, state your name.
Hello?
Yep, go ahead.
Please go ahead. I'll state your name. Thank you so much. Um, thank you so much. My name is Megan, and I've been a resident of Ridgecrest since December of 2020. I generally appreciate living in our community. Please accept my apologies for my absence from today's in-person meeting. I unfortunately believe I have come down with the flu. Although I am fully vaccinated this year, including a flu shot and all of my COVID boosters, I did not want to risk compromising anyone's health and safety by attending. Additionally, I experienced social anxiety and fear of public speaking, so I felt that the best way for me to address the matter of the fireworks ordinance would be via telephone. Now that we have gotten most of what's wrong with me out of the way, let me continue. My primary concern regarding the proposed changes or increased enforcement concerning fireworks, both illegal and safe and sane, has had, as it has been previously stated, the enforcement of illegal fireworks is already difficult, as most incidents are not reported until after the individuals responsible have left the area. There are existing ordinances in place that govern both the use of illegal fireworks and the proper use of legal, safe, and sane variety. I must express my concern that extensive discussion and potential amendments to existing laws may ultimately prove to be inefficient use of the councils and the public's time. If current regulations are challenging to enforce, I question how new stricter regulations will yield a different outcome. The current focus on this issue, in my opinion, appears to be an attempt to satisfy a local segment of the community. Perhaps those who frequently voice their complaints on local forums, while I understand the importance of addressing, of addressing resident concerns, including those related to noise and pets, I feel this approach is disproportionate. To put this matter into perspective, regarding community standards and enforcement, I offer a few examples. We must ensure we are not creating an environment where we constantly tiptoe around every perceived grievance. By contrast, are we effectively addressing other community issues, such as enforcing regulations for proper dog licensing for animals roaming the streets? Furthermore, are we consistently enforcing rules regarding pets in public spaces, such as ensuring only service animals are permitted in local stores and aren't defecating on aisle three? In closing, while I understand the council's desire to find a satisfactory resolution, I urge you to consider the practicality and enforceability of any potential amendment. I hope that if a decision is made to amend this ordinance, it is based on sound policy and not solely on appeasing and virtue signaling. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Yeah, thank you, Megan. I appreciate that. I think I can safely say that we've, this discussion has been long and ongoing, and I would even say, probably long before 2020, I've heard off and on throughout the community that we needed to come up with an ordinance that, that had more teeth, that there was actually something that law enforcement could do. And I do have, I do have faith in RPD that they will administer that law appropriately. I think that we're okay there. A quick conversation that I had after the last meeting was with the Kern County Fire Department, you know, and they, they said that, look, we, we do what we can, we really do, but there's only so much of us. And so I appreciate the, you know, I appreciate the fact that we had, we had to do something. So, thank you, Megan.
You're welcome.
All right. I would, is there, is there another caller on the line? Nope, we're good. Okay, I would entertain a, a motion if anybody has any. Listen, is there any further questions?
So moved. Oh, forgive me. I'll offer that motion.
Yeah, yeah, you're good.
Second.
Okay, we're going to have to do a roll call vote here, because we only had one slide for the consent calendar. Mr. Blades?
Aye.
Mr. Roger Rotnum?
Aye.
Mr. Heyman?
Aye.
Mr. Gorman?
Aye.
We have four eyes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you. We are, it looks like, Ms. Burlock, it is, you're, you're up. So we're on discussion on action items. Number six, professional service agreement with Lisa Weiss Consulting Incorporated for the workforce housing needs assessment. It's already that time again, huh?
So, good evening, council. This item is part of the Old CC grant, so it's actually task four in one of the many projects that we had on that Office of Local Defense Community grant that we were awarded. So this item is a workforce housing needs assessment, and the purpose is to address the future workforce needs of the China Lake Navy Base. All the funds for this are provided by that grant, so there isn't any city funds going into this. So we released the RFP, and we had several consultants apply. We chose this one because this firm has a lot of experience in California and with other military facilities, which is really important as we've worked with the Navy in this project. So all I'm asking tonight is that you authorize the city manager to sign the consultant agreement.
Thank you. This one does seem straightforward to me, but I offer it over to the council for any questions or comments. Mr., Mr. Gorman?
I have no comment, no questions.
Just a quick question. In regards to the workforce housing, does it also kind of overlap into the workforce of the city and the housing needs there, too? Or is it kept distinctly separate?
So we already did our housing element, even though it's not by the state yet, but we already did our housing element. So we already know what is projected for state requirements, and we also know what our housing inventory is, so we know how much we have still available as far as vacant land and what the future capacity could be. And we know what the trends are for that. But this specifically is just about the Navy housing. I mean, obviously, we have to take into consideration other organizations and how many people they bring in, right? Because that impacts the Navy's need if we're, if we think we need housing. And then we're not considering the outside agencies, obviously, that is part of it. But the major component is just what, what is the base hiring? What does that, you know, what are their demographics? So what do they potentially need? What are the income levels of those individuals? So we can kind of determine, you know, what it is that will meet the needs of the future workforce.
Thank you. Councilman Roger Rotnum?
Heather, on the same lines, so you did the housing element recently?
Yep.
And you determined that we need around 1,400 houses to be built by 2030 or 2031, something like that?
So I wouldn't say I did. Those are our.
Okay. Well, your report.
Yes. So those are our regional housing needs allocation, which is part of what the Kern Council of Governments assigns the city of Ridgecrest based on housing, based on employment levels, all of those things. So that number comes from the state, essentially.
So that should include the Navy requirement also, right?
Potentially, yes.
So, what is the purpose of this?
So the purpose, yeah, no, I mean, it's a good question. So the purpose of this is just so we can find paths forward, right? We've, as a community, we've talked a lot about workforce housing, right? What do they need? You have a lot of young professionals coming in, maybe they don't need to buy a house when they first move in. Maybe they do, maybe their families, you know. We've talked about it, but we don't have anything definitive that tells us what that population looks like for real. And then there are other private-public partnerships, even in the state, where agencies have worked with military facilities to facilitate housing partnerships. So that could be a potential outcome that we would identify through this study.
Thank you.
And we are paying them 79,968, I think, right?
Correct.
Okay. I mean, not that it really matters, just to give you hard time. Resolution says 79,968, and the agreement says 79,96, resolution says 79,936, but the agreement says 79,968. So we are giving $32 more for them. I'm just kidding. Hard time.
Thanks, Rebecca.
Am I right?
I don't see it. Where?
Is that, yeah, councilman?
Oh, yes, I see it on page one.
Really doesn't matter, but.
No, it doesn't. On the consultant agreement, page one, yes.
Is the amount we're going to use to put on the resolution.
Which one would you?
The resolution is correct.
Okay. Then we're good.
Agreement should be changed, then. Okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoroughness, as always. Mr. Roger Rotnum? Does the public have any questions for this item? No? Okay, bring it back to the council, unless there's any more comments or questions. Can I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve.
Say it.
Please vote. Four eyes, one absent. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're now on item number seven, a resolution of the Ridgecrest City Council approving a professional service agreement with Provost and Pritchard for consulting services for the continued design of the wastewater treatment plant and the state revolving fund application. Mr. Roberts, you are up. Thanks for being here.
Good. For part of the funding for the construction of the new wastewater plant, we're applying for a $110 million loan via the Clean Water State Revolving Fund. The interest rate on this loan is 2.1%. That's about half of what we, what the interest rate we can get on other bonds. For the application, a number of documents are needed. We don't have the expertise to do those documents or the time, takes about 400 hours of labor. Provost and Pritchard has a current agreement for this wastewater treatment plant, and they do have the expertise. So they provide a proposal, $111,000. Staff reviewed it, and another consultant reviewed it. We think it's fair and reasonable. We have the funds to do this. The proposal and costs are in the package. We'd like to amend the Provost and Pritchard agreement to include this work for the loan application and any other information needed.
All right. Thank you. We'll, we'll see, we'll see what the council has. Mr. Gorman? Mr. Heyman?
No comment, no questions.
Did they give you a timeframe of completion of their work?
The goal is to do it at end of December, early January, to meet the SRF requirements.
Okay. Hold your feet to the fire.
Yeah.
Yep.
Councilman Roger Rotnum?
No, no comments, thanks for the presentation.
Thank you. And so this one's actually over to city manager Travis. So you, you, this is not, this is not a deep question, I'm really just making sure the public's aware that it is budgeted funds, and so you saw this coming, right? This was.
Correct, when we budgeted, we did budget some extra funds for future grant opportunities for things like that. These are very, very detailed packages, whether that pertained to the environmental documents, which we had outside aid for, that pertained to the overall design. It's not very often that you design a full wastewater treatment plant from the ground up, so we felt that doing something like this and having the people who actually designed it give us the best chance to succeed in receiving the SRF funding, and if we can save two percent on our loan or a bond amount over a thirty-year bond, that's a significant amount of money that we can save for all of our rate payers, so.
Thank you. All right. Does, does the public have any questions on this item?
For the scouts, this is public participation in the legal process. You got to see how it did the first time I came up here, they just totally ignored me, that happens a lot. Anyway, says design, are we still in design phase?
Yes, near the end of it.
Pardon me?
Near, near the end of it, but in design.
When will there be a, you have an idea when the period will come after design? In other words, we're done?
We're modifying one piece of it that should be done first half of twenty-twenty-six.
Okay. Does this design include anything as far as the reclamation potential?
No, the further design has to do with the power to the plant.
Say that again, I didn't catch it.
The remaining design has to do with the power to provide power to the plant.
Okay, but everything else, design-wise, is actually done?
Basically, yes.
Basically, okay. So just maybe some fine tweaking here and there. Okay, so when we get the revolving fund application in, does that mean we're headed towards advertising to actually do the wastewater plant?
After the design is done and some process, I don't know how fast after the final design we would put it out for bid.
So currently, this is a partnership with the Navy. With all the airfield upgrades, the original thought for power had to be modified, so we're working and coordinating with the Navy, we have meetings with them monthly. We're, we're working with them to make sure that we set a timeframe that we can bid it, we can meet all the environmental studies that we still have to do that have a time span on them, like a lifespan on them, so we held off on those. So we're coming up with definitive dates by the time we can have the electrical side designed, that the Navy can meet for their upgraded portion, and then we can do our environmental studies. So it is a work in progress, but it is, it is nearing completion, and it should be able to, it could feasibly go out to bid, but we gotta make sure that we're working well with our neighbors who's providing us power.
Okay, and then I guess my final part would be, is that since we don't have reclamation included in this, is there, even though there's, I keep hearing discussions on the GA and the Water District and talking about reclamation, is there an avenue that would go that direction in the future if we, if we got to that point?
Nothing in this design.
So, so I did, this was a pretty easy one, so there, there are provisions and places laid out to where further expansion of the plant for reclamation can be done, but at this time, the city does not intend to do any design for reclamation.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, any other further public comment on item number seven? All right, thank you. I'll bring it back to the council for either further comments, questions, or a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Please vote. Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're onto committee reports. So, so for the troops, this is the part where, you know, the, the council is, because there's a lot of city business to happen, and a lot of that good business and public interaction happens at the committees, happens at the committee levels. If you have questions, it's a very good time to sit with council members, with planning commissioners, and with staff members that'll show up and for whatever time you need, we'll discuss whatever items that is. It could be a street, it could be you want to bring in a new business, it could be Parks and Rec, it could be any of those things, and that's what those committees are split out. So we use this time, because you can't have three council members in any one committee, we use this time to catch the community and the public up on what's going on in those committees and what we just recently discussed, if we just met. So we're on Economic Development Committee, myself and Mr. Roger Rotnum, and I can probably report out on that if you want me to. So we had, we have a few things to update on. First, I think the public is pretty aware that Ross is now up and running, Wendy's is open, you know, I just, yeah, I just had some chicken tenders the other day, it was pretty good. Yeah, I know the lines are probably backed up, but I think that they are processing people very quickly. I stopped in and talked to the manager for a while, and he's, seems like he's very on top of it. And, let's see. We, we discussed briefly some changes to the, to Balsam Street, ballards are gonna be installed January the ninth, so they'll be there just in time for the first Food Truck Friday. And food, so Food Truck Friday is gonna be the next event. It's always good for the public to hand off something to the private sector, so when you saw the farmer's market go back to being handled by a private group, that is much better than the, than the government handling it, in my opinion. So the city's gonna try to keep things going, and one of those things is Food Truck Friday. So that's gonna be, it's gonna be rotating, it's gonna start on January the ninth, and it's gonna be down at Balsam. I believe Santa's Art Shop is gonna be December the fifth, along with the city tree lighting. Do you have anything, did I miss anything, Solomon? Okay, we'll now move on to, oh gosh, that's up for the committees, so is there anything for other committees, boards, and commissions? Skip, I know you're a part of multiple different outside committees, nothing? City manager report.
Nothing to report.
All right.
I have a question.
Yes, please.
Just for the benefit of.
Absolutely, no, this is what it's all about.
Just to give you an idea regarding public comment, because there was a comment made by a speaker about being ignored, in, in this city, it is the most engaged council between the speakers and the council members of any cities that I've ever seen, and I've been doing this for almost forty years. And I've been a city attorney to eight, nine cities in California. This council responds to questions, it engages. The law provides for public comment, the speaker gets up there, says what they think about an item, and then they're asked to sit down, and next speaker comes up, et cetera. This is more like a town hall, the public comment, that this council runs. So just, there are different ways of doing this, this is a very, very inclusive way, just so, you know.
Yeah, to back that up, so we, we do try to do that in Ridgecrest, because we have the ability to do that. Things are still rather civil, relatively speaking, and so we can continue to do that. If, we would have to hear a lot, adhere a lot closer to the law if things were different, but we're, we're given some amount of leeway, so. Okay, on to future agenda items.
I have a question.
Oh, yes, please, yep.
I have a question for city manager, can you give us an update on the pool, please?
That was literally what I was like, dang.
Man, I should, oh gosh, thank you, Solomon.
Staff did receive three bids, we are in the process of analyzing them, we went through an extensive prog, progress, process of checking some references, and we are hoping to have an item on schedule for the seventeenth, right?
The next council.
For the next council meeting, for you guys to decide which direction we shall take.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Okay, okay. Back to future agenda items, I jumped the gun. Solomon, do you have anything? No? Mr. Heyman?
Today is the Beaver Moon.
Okay. All right.
It's the, no, today, Wednesday, November fifth, is the brightest moon of the twenty-five, supermoon of the twenty-fifth.
That's cool.
Year, so.
Thank you.
Enjoy it.
Cool, thank you. Skip, did you have anything for future agenda items?
No.
Okay. And Mr. Heyman, I'm gonna take that as your mayor and council comment? Or do you have other council comments?
We're good.
That's good, okay. Skip?
I'm into a novelty right now, and I'm enjoying it enough that I'll share it with you. Rika runs the local Rotary, and I don't know who initiated it over there, but Rotary wants a Rotary peace pole here locally, they're international, it's a big deal. If you follow your nose on the internet, look, look up Rotary peace pole, and you'll be, you'll find a remarkable amount of peace poles all over the world. Well, Rika decided that we ought to have our own peace pole, and she luckily came to me for design and fabrication of this, and I'm doing it now, and I'm just enjoying the dickens out of it, because I want ours to be unique, and bigger and better than any other peace pole in the world. And I'm doing it now, and anybody who's interested in how things like this come to exist are invited to simply stop by my shop, I'm there virtually every day. And working, a little alarm will go off as you walk in the door, so I'll stop welding, unless you walk in with a welder's mask, then I'll just keep on going. But it's, it's coalescing now, it's coming together, and you get to see it as it happens, and enjoy the process of design and fabrication, perhaps as much as I have been. Thought I'd share that with you. Over the next three or four weeks, it'll be coming together. That's it.
Thank you, Skip.
Can I add to that?
Yes, please do.
So Skip generously took on this task, and this thing is amazing. I would suggest that you maybe see if you can get your girls and your, your young men down there to take a look at it. But we have worked with the college, and we're going to install it at the college, and we'll have a big ceremony when we do it. Hopefully, that'll be after the first year when he's all done, but it, it's gonna be an amazing project for, for you to come down and, and take a look at, for sure.
Awesome, thanks, Rika. Mr. Roger Rotnum?
I'm pretty sure, Mayor, you'll make a comment, but I just want to thank the scouts for being here. You are the future of America, so, you know, so you need to know what is happening in your local community so that you take it when you go out to college. So, and being a scout, you learn a lot of principles, put them into practice, and be good citizens, and help this community and the country to go in the right direction. Thank you for being here today. And I also want to thank Mr. Tom Witnick and Mr. Justin Dunn for your participation. First time we are seeing you, thanks for coming, Mr. Justin, I appreciate that, thanks for your questions. And, Mr. Gorman, did you say you are turning eighty?
Yes, but aren't, aren't we all? Mine's just closest.
Okay. Congratulations, that's all, thank you.
Yeah, that's good, I, I just wanna, just wanna echo Mr. Roger Rotnum's comments. Melanie and Jeff, thank you, I, I know you've been doing this for a while, you put a lot of work, these, these kids work hard, you guys work hard as well, so thank you for doing it, this, we are looking at the future, and it's, it's humbling, thank you. I have nothing further, so thank you, everybody, for coming out, thank you for participating, everybody in the public, we appreciate all of you, your, and your, your input means, means everything. Have a good evening.